Slammer, it's three thirty PM, folks.
It must be.
Excuse me, Monday, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, this is a special meeting of the Marquette Township Board. And let's stand and say the pledge, please.
The flag of the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Randy?
Hey, Trustee Ketta.
Here.
Trustee Winslow.
How's it?
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Clerk Katari is here and Supervisor Duran.
Here.
Staff President, Manager Cangus, Committee Members present, is Pete LaRue from our Roads Committee.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Any comments on the emails?
No, we have no emails.
Okay. John?
Real quick, also present are two members of the Ad Hoc Events Committee, Pete LaRue and Bill Tewors.
Okay, thanks. All right, any public comment? Okay. We need approval of the agenda?
So moved.
It's part.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, so today we are going to discuss township events going forward. Um, there are work sessions, regular meetings, and special meetings. And just, um, to make sure, work sessions, we do not make motions, special meetings, we do. We are allowed to. So I set this up as a special meeting so that we could make a motion if we chose to, but we don't have to. Otherwise, we can bring something over to the next, uh, agenda, be February first's agenda. This week's already done. So, um, John, you want to do some history maybe of the events? That might be the easiest way to start.
Sure, and quite honestly, Pete could probably give you a more thorough history. But I would say of most importance for you to consider is the two lo- longest standing members of the Community Events Committee resigned the end of last year. That was the Chair Todd Nordeig and Randy Gerard, who stayed on in a voluntary capacity after he retired as a township employee. That leaves us in a position where it's a perfect opportunity to consider the next path forward. We know there's some history with the events, um, some things that maybe the township shouldn't have been doing, some things that the township probably caused the township to take on more liability or risk than it maybe should have. And those are the challenges with harvesting, transporting, re-erecting a thirty-five to forty-foot Christmas tree, as an example. Having the right equipment to do it and expecting volunteers to accomplish a task of that magnitude is maybe a little unrealistic, so the thought process is, does the Township Board want to continue down the same path it has historically? The two key members of the committee, having departed, are the ones that instigated most of the effort, aside from Pete doing all the work. He's not even listening.
I can hear. I can make a meeting a little shorter.
So, having considered this quite a bit in the short time I've been in the position, I, I do think we have a moment of opportunity where maybe the township doesn't take the lead on summer all of the events moving forward. You can disband this ad hoc committee, which really didn't have bylaws and, as a result, maybe created some headaches we didn't need, whether it was intentional or not, simply because volunteers are going to find a way to get things done, not necessarily thinking about the repercussions on the other end. So, not pointing fingers, that's just the reality of it. We do have what I think to be a partial solution available to us, and that's part of the reason why Bill is here today, in that Media Brew, I think, is willing to take on two of the three events if you want to walk away from the current arrangement we have of this volunteer ad hoc committee running the three events. And then that leaves one event, the most critical, I think, to the township as a community, the Community Day itself, to figure out. So, um, maybe now is an appropriate time for Bill to give Media Brew's perspective on those two events, but it looks like Treasurer Johnson might have a question or something to add.
I'm kind of following up on John. After reading this, what came to mind is, the question is, do we still want one or all three activities within the township? I think we as a board need to make that decision before we go forward. Do we want these activities going on within the township? If we do, then we have to move forward as to how they're going to be handled within the township.
Well, that's true, but if someone else is willing to take the burden, you know, we would have to vote whether we want to have them.
As long as we have no responsibilities or no financial responsibility at that time.
We do have to decide how we want to structure that, which is why we're here. Because we've got the three events, the car show in June, Community Day in August, and the tree lighting in November. And as was said once before, a lot of communities do not sponsor events. It might be the Lions Club or the Downtown Development Authority or, you know, some other type of organization that has the events. They just happen to have them in the community and then the community doesn't get involved. There's, there's no, they may want to, um, contribute something, help or financially, but the event is handled by someone other than the municipality itself. So, go ahead, Linda.
Just to add to that, oftentimes, communities contribute, um, through, um, the fire department, um, through, uh, the Public Works Department, setting stuff up, cleanup. The City of Marquette has an application that's filled out and then the decision is made. I'm sure that's how they, um, and, and they require that that event have certain things, um, done, insurance and whatever. I tried to find Nagani's stuff and, um, I wasn't real successful. But I know Boy Scouts take the lead on some of the events throughout the state. Certainly, the International Food Fest, that lead has been taken by a group, is it Rotary or Exchange, one of them. One of them takes the lead, the other takes the seafood. Those are all driven by, um, not the, not the city, not driven by the city, but there's oversight in all of that.
Well, and there's fees too, that the city employs.
There are fees.
With, you know, pickup, garbage pickup or police patrols or whatever.
Correct, correct.
Randy?
Yeah, and I agree with Linda, I think a lot of those organizations do it because it's revenue generators for them, for exchange and Rotary. I know they fund their programs through your, for the whole year through late, the seafood fest and the other fest. And you're right, the City of Marquette does in-kind, uh, contributing with is, maybe give them the park for free that weekend and Public Works. They give the Public Works workers, um, and Fire Department, they in-kind those services for that weekend. So it's, it's a cost, but it's really not a, a money cost. It's a cost, but it isn't a money cost, so.
And it is kind of a money cost, but it's not a cash cost?
No.
Sometimes, yeah, there's fees on their.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Sometimes they do charge for cleanup or police services or whatever. Sometimes they don't.
Yeah, and like I said, like the police services, fire, and that, and even like at the Fourth of July, the Public Works comes out, does all the barricades. I don't think the city charges them for that. But it's a cost to the city, but it, you know, it's absorbed.
Okay, so Bill, do you want to share with us what you and Chuck or, I mean, your company feel like you would like to do?
Well, um, I think we were thinking about taking on the car show and the tree lighting. Those are the two events I think we can control the easiest. What we were hoping for is, we know that the budget's been approved for twelve-five for this year, so we were hoping just to get, uh, seventy-five hundred for those two events and we would fully take them over for you. You would still get all the, um, you know, the headlines, publicity, everything like this added and, uh, every, every bit of promotion we do, but we would take over complete control of those for you. And we were hoping to do that for, you know, we would be willing to take over that whole responsibility for the next, you know, three years at least, if we had your commitment for those three years for the seventy-five hundred dollars. Then we would also help if you wanted to do Community Days, we would assist in any way we can, we would just weren't going to take that one over ourselves.
So you'd be working with us, then you wouldn't?
We would actually run the whole thing, we would, we would set everything up for you, but you would get headlined in any, any promotion we did, anything like that. The township would.
Okay, so we would be paying you to do it?
In, in sense, you would be contributing, you would be a sponsor of it.
Yeah, which is?
You would be sponsoring it, not, not running it, you'd have nothing to do with it, it'd be a Media Brew, uh.
So we would be paying you to do it?
You would be sponsoring part of it, you would be a spot, one of many sponsors.
And the other sponsors would contribute the same thing?
Yes.
Seventy-five hundred dollars each?
Depending, it'd be different ranges on, depending on what sponsorship you wanted. But we're just going at that, there was three events, twelve-five, and we figured, you know, that's the way it's been broken up in the past.
I, I think, and Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that money was just set there as a placeholder, it was never intended.
For this year?
Yeah, it was a placeholder, it was never intended to be spent necessarily. It wasn't intended not to be spent, but it was not spent intended to pay someone to do something, in my mind. It was just a placeholder.
Left it in the, in the budget, not knowing what we were going to do with it.
Okay, well, I was under a...
John?
First, I want to be clear, I didn't make any promises to anyone about this. I talked to them and they said this is what they think they would need as far as a commitment from the township to ensure they do not lose money by taking this on as a business. That's my understanding of it, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure that's how we discussed it.
Yep.
You don't want to enter the, into an agreement to do this and then they lose money.
We won't take this over to lose money.
Right, that's my understanding.
That's just not what we do. So we're willing to, you know, and I think, I think we could improve upon, you know, both of the events. And that, that's just our offer to you, if you'd like to, you know, um, that would be great. If you guys decide not to do any events, we may just take it over ourselves anyways, and just do it ourselves.
That was my next question, what happens if we just decide to get out of the events altogether? Let's say we don't do all, any of them, any of the three.
Then we'd have to, you know, depend on, you know, we'd have to discuss over at the station if we want to, talk with some other, uh, sponsors if they want to get involved. And either we do it or we just walk away from all three events.
I guess I'm not comfortable with us turning it over to you but being a contributor, because then we don't have any control. It's kind of a township event where this way, otherwise it would be a Media Brew event. Does that make sense?
Yep. Because we will be going after different sponsors too.
Well, basically, we'd be a sponsor, we would not control the event. So we would be donating money for a sponsorship, that's all we're doing.
And that's all we would be.
That's all we'd be doing is a sponsor.
That's all we would be, and I don't think we should expect them to get an equal amount from anybody else. Not, that's ridiculous.
Well, when you go out looking for sponsorships, you say to the sponsors for seventy-five hundred dollars, this is what we're going to give you. You, you go out looking for gold sponsors, platinum sponsors, bronze sponsors, and you know, that's their business, that's not our business. We decide how much, if we want to be a sponsor or not.
Right.
Yeah, it's not about anything else.
But I don't think you can expect them to get an equal amount from somebody else. I don't think that's, why? Why do we, if you're going to be a sponsor, you can be a sponsor with any amount, and anybody off the street can be a sponsor too.
Right, you usually pick your sponsorship level. When, um, when places go looking for money, they have a sponsorship level and they offer certain, uh, conditions to the sponsorship.
Well, I don't think we can set the rules that they would be.
Oh, no, but I mean, since we've worked in the past.
If we're paying them money, we can set our rules.
We're not paying them money, we're only going to be a sponsor.
We're not going to.
There is a difference between just contributing, and that's what I'm talking about, is turning over the control.
Right, done.
So if this is their event and we agree to give them a thousand dollars, like we do with the fireworks, they can do with that whatever they want. They can put it toward marketing, paying somebody for the stage or supplies or whatever, they can do what they want, we have no control, but our name is on it. So, other names are on this, all of a sudden, different people, different companies, that we're linked with now.
Is it, is it a name attached with, who is controlling it? Or is it simply a name that's attached with the location it's occurring?
No, as a contributor, we would have our name, our logo or something on their flyers, their marketing. Sponsored by, CCI, Eagle, Downtown Development, Marquette Township, Business Association, whatever, they'd all be on there. Media Brew event, right? Is this what I'm thinking?
Pretty much.
Actually, John, you had your hand up, oh, you wanted to say.
I, I think we're unraveling the minutia before we get to the big decisions. There's two types of events that we're talking about. One is an event on private property that we generally don't have much control of. The other is an event on public property, which we can put additional layers of requirements on, and we should, because we will ultimately assume liability as the property owner. If the events are held at the mall, we don't necessarily have a role in it beyond issuing a permit to allow the event to happen, and that's just a simple process, okay? And you can choose to be involved in that whatever way you want. You don't have to commit to a dollar amount today if you're not comfortable with it. I think what we've heard, what the ask is, it's up to you to decide if you're comfortable with the ask. And then they decide whether or not they can continue down the path that they're willing to continue on. The third event, the Community Day, I think that's, that's the one that should be the most challenging, in my opinion, because either it's going to continue to happen in some form or fashion with the township as the lead or the Business Association as the lead or somebody else is the lead. But now you also have to add controls on things that we used to allow, but we shouldn't if we're the lead. If the, if Community Day is a township event, number one, no inflatables. That's what our insurance company has made perfectly clear. If it's hosted by somebody else on township property, they get the insurance, the inflatable company provides the devices and operate them, provides their own insurance with us as an additional insurer, it's risk assignment. We need to get out of that business, we can't take on that risk anymore. So, are you comfortable walking away from the first two? And what are you willing to commit to Media Brew as far as assuming their risk, if anything? And then, do you want to continue with Community Day and how?
Randy?
Listening to the gentleman talking about the two items, the car show and tree lighting, I'm looking at, at the township being a sponsor for X number of dollars. For that sponsor, what does a township receive for being that response, that sponsor? We as a township board have to determine what that value is to the township at this point in time. If we only have twelve-five in the, in the, uh, budget, they're talking about between the two fifteen thousand.
No, seven?
Seven and five.
For both?
Of the twelve-five.
For both of them.
For both of them?
Yeah, together, seven and five.
I misunderstood you, I apologize for that, I thought it was seventy-five hundred for each, no?
No. No, and that was leaving, the way I did, we just did is I, I left the bulk of the money for the township book days because I know that's a little bit more expensive to do.
That puts my mind in a different, different perspective, but if we become a sponsor, fine, we're just a sponsor, we have no responsibilities other than we go to you because you're looking for sponsors for these activities and we then as a board commit X number of dollars in being a sponsor. For that sponsor, we get our name out there maybe and that's about the incentive. We have no other responsibilities?
Yeah, I'd still, we still, we're still willing to give you top billing on it like it's always been, you know, and working right with us, right underneath our name. The only difference is, is that, you know, we will be, we will be putting everything together, we'll be organizing it, we'll be, we'll be taking over all the risk. You know, I'll be working directly with Joe instead of anybody else on the, on the committee. Pete, I'm sure will still be on the, with us, you know, working with us and, and, you know, um, we'll find the tree. We'll do everything like this, we'll, uh, you know, we'll coordinate everything like we did before. You know, it'll just be out of your hands, really, on those two events. And then on the third one, which is the biggest one, we'll, we'll help in any way we can. I'll, I'll go on the board, I'll help with John, I'll help with whatever you want. That just seems like it's more of a, a direct thing that you'd have to, I don't know if you'd want to work with Todd again. The only reason I'm saying Todd is Todd's got the, the nice, uh, the nice stage and he's got a connection with all of the artists, but I'd still be willing to help out in any way I can. And we're still going to have to work with Todd in a way anyways because we'll have to rent the stage from him. You know, we don't have a stage, we'd have to hook up, you know, borrow some of his equipment, use some of his equipment. And, um, but we, you know, we would be looking for other sponsors where we never have before.
Go ahead, John.
I just want to add one thing. Todd, having been a committed volunteer on the committee over the years, was not charging full market rate on the equipment that he was providing and his services to do that, so just be aware. We were getting a discount because he was so heavily involved, which means if, if somebody else is taking it on, he's probably want to get, going to want to get compensated for his normal rates on that. And maybe that's part of the reason why they're suggesting they need seventy-five hundred in order to consider moving forward. So anyway, thought you should be aware of that.
Okay, so, do we, let me ask you this, do we want to give up anything with the car show? I'm not talking about money, I'm just saying, do we want to stay with managing, running, contributing, organizing the car show? Because that's probably the smallest one to deal with.
Nope. Why don't you take a, get an opinion?
I am, I'm trying to, yeah.
No, here.
Okay.
No.
No. If we can, I mean, if we can have Bill do this for seventy-five hundred dollars for the.
No, don't, no, no.
No money at this.
Do we want to do the car show? Do we, we have three events.
Okay.
Do we want to do the car show? Do we want to? Do we want to contribute, organize, help ensure, have the food, get the volunteers? Do we want to do the car show?
We don't.
I don't want to see it go away, but I don't, I don't think we should have a.
That's what we have to figure out, is do we want, do we want to do them? If we do, then our particip- our participation level.
Okay.
Okay, so, we can get rid of the car show. And if somebody else, Rotary or the Lions or Media Brew or whoever wants to do a car show in June, we don't need to do it, okay?
It's an open event.
Right.
It's out here, who wants it?
Yes, okay. And at some point, I may want a motion on that, but let's just keep going. All right, then the next biggest one is Christmas, because it's not as big, quite, quite as big as Community Day. So Christmas.
Everyone, everyone heard Mr. Tewors say we wouldn't have to worry about finding, harvesting, and re-erecting a tree, right?
I heard that.
Yeah, but that's what, that's what we have to decide, whether it's the tree or the stage or the candy canes or Santa or whatever. Do we want to still have involvement with Christmas? Does the township want to? Randy?
Comment I have, no, I think we want to get out of it, but the question is, is it going to be negative on us but not being the primary sponsor of it?
Negative to whom?
The township board for not taking a job with John.
John?
I can tell you it was negative that we were the lead on the last Christmas tree.
I know that, yeah.
The social media was terrible this year, from a whole bunch of people that were willing to criticize and not step up. And no matter what we did, it was going to be another black eye against us. And quite honestly, I think, as great as all of these events are for the township, none of them are good with the township as the lead.
Yes.
Right, I agree.
Agreed.
And, and I do not think it's our job to run events.
Correct.
Community Day too, but, but we can, we can, I'm trying to narrow this down a little bit. Okay, so, we don't care about the car show, we're going to scrap that, if somebody else wants to take something like that on, we can do that. Christmas, we don't want to be involved, is that right?
We don't want to be the lead.
We don't want to be the lead.
Okay, okay. All right, so maybe it ends up being money, okay. Um, Community Day, how important is that? Is that something the township feels we need to take the lead on and do for our public? It's a tougher one, I know.
So who is at Community Days? Who is sitting in that audience? Who is listening to those bands? Who is there? Is it Marquette Township residents or is it Marquette County residents? I mean, who are we doing it for?
Everybody's invited, we can't, and we don't ask for IDs, you know.
I know that, but who, what is the township's job in running events? That's the big question.
We don't really have one.
Yeah, we do not have one.
Every time I've been there with the Fire Department, there's been a lot of Marquette Township residents.
That's not what I'm saying. Who, who are we, who is it there for?
Our residents.
Our residents.
Okay, and then, then why do we advertise to Marquette County?
You got to get it out somehow.
Well, I, I just have a whole different picture of that.
You can't single it out and say.
I don't think it's our role to run events.
I don't either, I agree.
Do I think we should have Community Days? I absolutely do. And I think we should have the Christmas tree and should we be visible? Do you know how they saw the township at the Christmas tree event? The hot chocolate people? That was the township. It wasn't Santa Claus, it wasn't the stage, it wasn't the dancers. They saw the Fire Department, but they saw Pete LaRue at the hot chocolate thing. That doesn't mean we still won't do the hot chocolate thing. So think about, what's your role? I love when the Exchange Club does the International Food Fest, okay?
We don't have an Exchange Club in the township.
That Exchange Club covers everyone in the Exchange Club and it's not just township residents. We have a business association, Pete LaRue's an Alliance Club in Harvey. And you're going to say, we don't have a Lions Club, nope, we don't, we don't. But we have other people who are wanting to take on. Media Brew wants to take on something. Media Brew did probably most all the work for the car show. Let's be real here, because how many of us did anything for the car show?
I think you can extend that to all three.
Yeah, how many of us did anything, other than Pete? I volunteered to do registration, it wasn't really that hard, but they have a whole plan. So the township provides the Fire Department and our Public Works Department. And that comes from the staff, not from all of us.
But you get seen, you get seen in a, you get seen in a good light though, because of those two events.
Only if you show up.
Only if who shows up?
The township board.
Not necessarily.
No, not necessarily.
Oh, I think so, I think it's about that.
I would say the public, whether the township residents or not, think this is a township event. They think, they all think they're township events.
That Christmas tree lighting one, even though the, the tree afterwards was, you know, whatever that was, but the event itself went off with a bang and it was a huge hit. And, but you, you need to, you need to maybe watch.
I was there for the last two years.
Okay, did you watch TV Six? Did you see what they said about it? It was fantastic.
Yeah, I watched it, but I was there too.
Oh, and, yeah, I was there too.
Yeah.
And the car show, we had a hundred and forty cars, which was the most we ever had.
Yeah, I did registration for the car show.
I know, so, so I don't know how you couldn't say that those two events weren't hugely successful.
I didn't say they weren't hugely successful.
Okay.
I said it's not the township's job to be running events.
But it's very good for the township to be seen in a good, uh, good light.
Absolutely. Do you think that people see the International? Do you think that people see the International Food Fest as the city's? They do.
They do.
They do.
Yeah.
They do, and they don't run it.
Correct.
Yep. So I'm not saying that part.
That's fine.
Bernie?
I think, the discussion here is, I think the two items, the car show and the tree lighting, you know, I think we need to move away from that. And I'd like to become a, a sponsor. The township to be a sponsor for, for those two items. And the activities, the township activities in August, that we continue to run that ourselves for one more year to see how it works out. But, uh, we go that way.
So, so my comment is, it's really not any different than us giving a thousand dollars to the fireworks for Marquette. We're sponsored, although with these two events, we get a lot, I think, big, big bang, a lot bigger bang for our dollar. Because we give a thousand dollars and say, "I haven't heard them yet say Market Township's giving a thousand dollars for the fireworks." And, you know, that isn't much, but it's still something.
But the city doesn't get that money, Randy?
No, I know. It goes to another group, but we still don't get acknowledged.
I think you get acknowledged on the program.
I haven't seen it yet, but...
Okay, so being, um, this is the part that's in my craw, that I can't justify. And, you know, you guys can vote me or whatever, but we would not have any control over who Media Brew selects as their other contributors or sponsors. Okay? So if they decide they want to go to Pike Distributing or, um, Higher Love or whoever, the whiskey shop, the new whiskey shop down in Marquette, our name's gonna be on that and this is a family event. And that's what troubles me about contributing. And if there's a way to get around that or whatever, I might agree to it. But I don't like the idea of sponsoring, not having any control and being linked in a community event with organizations that are not family oriented.
So I'll just share what we did at Junior Happy, because we had that same issue. The alcohol and the smoking and whatever. We just said as a group, which was our policy, that those people would not be allowed to advertise. So when we ran events, there was no alcohol. Nobody had a Pike distributor.
We wouldn't be running these events now.
Well, then you don't have to contribute.
I think it's-
That's, that's my wondering.
That's exactly right. You don't have to contribute if they don't, um, yeah. They wouldn't do that.
I just think that following the path we seem to be taking is, we are willing to be a sponsor. But we have to recognize that if we're going to do it and follow the path with the constraints, we, we can't put constraints on control of it. I think the only thing that we could use to control it in any way at all, if we want to just be a sponsor, is by saying, "You got it for this year or next year, but then we're not gonna okay it for the future." That's the only constraint I think you could really put on. If you think that they are bringing in a whole bunch of non-family sponsors and we don't like it, then we don't let them run it anymore. That's, that's a way to control it.
Oh, yeah.
Just don't contribute anymore, that's all.
Yeah. John?
I was just gonna say, once you give up control of the event, you only have one choice left, and that's whether you participate either financially or with the assistance of township staff. That's the only choice you have left, once you give it up. So that's why I don't think staff should make that decision. You should. Uh, but like I said, the tree lighting, actually Community Day as well, both present some significant liability concerns for the township. Car show, while it seems to go off pretty well, what happens if there's one collector's vehicle damaged somehow? Do we now have a risk there that we don't want to take on? That's not a question that I can answer. It'd be up to probably some interpretation of the legal and insurance fields, but, um, I can't also tell you what concerns you have regarding participating financially, so... I would guess that what you choose to do will help them decide what they're going to do as well.
So I asked if Bill could let us know what they're willing or able to do. Bernie?
I think if we become a sponsor, we have very little say as to what, what they're going to do. We're gonna commit finances or staff or whatever it is. Then we do that. We don't have any say at that point in time. So if they're looking at seventy-five hundred dollars for those two events and that, for a car show and a tree, tree lighting, we just become a sponsor for that dollar amount, and that's it.
Right.
So, and, uh, if they go out and get other sponsors, wherever they may be, no. It becomes the point that we don't really agree with the number, the type of sponsors they're getting. We don't have to redo it again.
No.
Then, then they're gonna have to figure out something else to do it. But I would say, my personal feeling, that the car show and the tree lighting to move forward on and the Community Days, we somehow take care of ourselves for one more year to see how it works. Now, if we can't do that, then we move that off our table too and give it to someone else to do it and that.
Remember, if we do do that, no bouncy houses.
That's our, it's us, so we control it. That's one hundred percent.
We are, we can't get the insurance to have bouncy houses.
We just-
If we, if we run the whole show.
Right. But those are the rules that we set up.
If we are keeping Community Days, who's, who's going to plan it? That's the biggest issue, because now we don't have a committee to do that and to range all those details. And staff has much more productive things to do than plan an event. I don't disagree with Treasurer Johnson's point, that it would be a good one to keep in-house, but somebody's gonna have to step up to make that happen. We can't just rely on, uh, Mr. LaRue. Although I'm sure he'd be more than happy to help us.
Bernie?
So this is the way I look at it. I think, from what I gather from here, the township board is interested in being a sponsor for the two events. The car show and the tree lighting. And then we want to try to keep the Community Day with, with us. So that would mean that our, one of our future meetings, probably the next, not, probably the February meeting, we'd have to create an ad hoc committee to plan that. And get resident input or whoever. We'd have to get something going quick, because that's, August will be here before you know it and you have to get the artists lined up and such. So you have to do that fairly, probably I would assume by April.
Yep.
So, that's the way I see things going, and if we can't get any interest by the time we need to plan this, then I think we drop Community Day. So, I'd like to make a motion that we sponsor, um-
No, be a sponsor.
Be a sponsor. Be a sponsor of the, uh, car show and the Christmas tree lighting for the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars.
Do you want to do it for one year or two years?
I'll do it for this year and see where it goes. That'll give-
Well, then we're gonna, I, I, well, I can't give you an answer then if we're gonna do it right now, what, because I have to go back. Actually Chuck Williams was supposed to be here today, but he had to go back to Indianapolis. He had a death in the family. And so I'm gonna run everything by him, because we also do, you know, once we find out that if you guys are on board for this, then we're gonna go, you know, we have a lot of planning too to, to make sure that we can pull it off. And, and that's what we wanted to do, and then, you know, then come back to you and say, "Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll do this."
Well, I think we could commit seventy-five hundred right now, and if you can make that work, Bill, maybe that, you know, and you can probably tell us in a short amount of time if that's not gonna work.
Oh, yeah. And, and I think the seventy-five to a hundred is what we were looking for. We were just looking for, okay, we're going to, we were gonna put ourselves out there for a minimum of three years. So we were kinda looking for that for this year and then two years after that, just because, you know, if we do, if we do go out and purchase a tree, if we do have a tree made, that it's not just for a one-year event.
But you have to look at it from our point of view too. We want to see how the first year goes. If it's probably a good thing, if things work out pretty well, then I'm sure this board would have, wouldn't have a problem renewing it for another two years.
Support roll call.
Actually, there was support, but...
Okay. Anything else?
One question for Bill. Bill, do you foresee any changes in the events from your perspective? Or are you just gonna keep them going the same way they have?
I think, well, I think we're gonna try to make them a little bigger. Um, by bringing in other sponsors, um, we will be able to, uh, afford to do different things. Uh, you know, we would like to find out if we can actually get a permanent tree put there. Um, we're, we're discussing about possibly making an artificial tree that, you know, won't look very good during the day, but it's gonna look fantastic at night. And that's, uh, discussing with Joe if we can have a piece of the property to have a, a spot put in there, um, and then have it constructed. Uh, we, we did, uh, last year have some people that came up to us that were willing to buy us a thirty-five thousand dollar tree. It just didn't work in with what the, the township liked. Uh, you know, and so, you know, you know, all sponsors might not be the same, you know, but I mean, like, in our line of work, we have to deal with everybody. And, um, you know, you know, for an example, you said Higher Love and stuff like this. I know they approached us last year and then, um, you know, we turned them down. And they went downtown and, um, you know, made a donation downtown and then handed out four hundred cups of hot cocoa. So I, I think that was just money we missed out on for the township. I think it was just money we missed out on. And I, you know. My, my, my firm belief is if we accept their taxes, we should be able to embrace them into our community. And, you know, we're not gonna do anything, you know, that's gonna be wrong, you know, or, or not, not family friendly, but all businesses can be involved. And, and that's just what we're looking at. So, so we'll see how it goes.
One more question. So the seventy-five hundred dollars is all we will be providing? We won't be providing any township labor, or are we gonna do anything?
Oh, John's gonna work every one of them. He's already told me.
No, he's not.
To the extent I'm available, car show, I've never been in town for, so...
So do you still anticipate that we'll still do all the things the township staff did before? Besides seventy-five hundred dollars? Randy, it's your motion.
Um, so that's a question for Bill.
Well, you know, on, on the, on the, uh, tree lighting, absolutely, we'd still like the fire department to drive Santa around.
And that's fine.
And I think, and I think that's, I think that's a big plus. I think that gives the kids a big hoot. Um, you know, um...
That's an end, that being an end kind from the township.
You know, I think when they do the car show, they have the, uh, you know, the, um, the ambulances come by every once in a while, just to check on it, everything, make sure everything's okay. I don't think we'll be doing a parade, so we'll have to do, uh, anything like that again to have, uh, roadblocks. But I mean, you know, just, uh, you know, I, I guess not, not put up, uh, any, any problems with us having it in the parking lot. I mean, it's, it's been ran there so many years, we have a pretty good idea of what can happen and what can't happen. We had to move it last year, because normally we have it right down by Applebee's. But there was really no reason there for, because we didn't have a tree. So we did move it back closer to the mall. Um, if we have the tree, it'll be again then down by Applebee's, the, the tree lighting.
Let me ask the manager, would you have a problem if, if they needed some in-kind help? Would you have a problem with that, John? Probably not.
I've been, I've been, uh, supporting events from a municipal perspective for over a decade and that's almost common. The places where money's a lot tighter, they start putting price tags associated with it. I don't know that we're there yet, especially for the level of effort they might be requesting assistance on. I think it's a good idea.
So the motion will be, is to be a sponsor of the car show and the tree lighting for the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars for one year, for this coming year. And that's the motion. My intent would be is, and this is not against Bill or anything, but I just can't myself, I don't want to lock the, the board into a long-term thing. And then, for some reason, the events are, they shouldn't, you know, they'll be good, I'm sure, but if they're not, then I don't want to be locked into a long-term thing. So I think this year would be a good year to transition, see where it goes, and then maybe it's a long-term relationship we have moving forward, so...
Support stands.
Okay, so the roll call is, Clerk Cattary, yes. Trustee Ketta?
Yes.
S.D. Winslow?
Yes.
S.D. Marks?
Yes.
Justice Iverson?
Yes.
Uh, Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
No.
Motion carries six to one.
Okay. So what do we do with the Community Day? Do you want to talk about that now?
I think, Lynn, that we should put it on the February first agenda.
Okay.
And we explain to the residents, "We're doing that event with hopefully Media Brew's help." And we get a committee going to plan that for, you know, until, like, April first is the drop dead point. If we don't have anything planned by then, it, it, we don't, we're not running it. Because you gotta get things planned and in order, so...
Give the public thirty days to decide if they want to help put it on? So it's still our event?
Still our event.
Okay, then we're gonna need, use the rest of the budget probably for the stage and whatever else we might have to rent or buy or, you know. Okay?
So that will help meet our goals, our two thousand twenty-two goals, which was to get more people involved on one-time events. So we can market it as a, "Here's an event you can get involved in, one day, one time."
It's their event. It's gonna be the community event.
Yeah, I'm gonna run the ice cream stand.
If, if they don't want to do that, then, if they don't want to do that, then I guess-
I get free ice cream?
We're not doing Community Day if anyone wants to help.
There's not gonna be free ice cream.
If I help?
Um, yes.
Okay.
What'll we get leftover?
But, you know, we have a fire department that could do, I mean, we have a lot of people that maybe could do something and we don't need a bouncy house. We can have face painting.
Go ahead, John.
There's a lot to unravel there, but I, I appreciate the fact that there's been consideration for it. Um, I think the Market Township Business Association should be approached as a very first start. I also think we need to consider either working with Media Brew or Great Lakes Radio, which is Todd, to book bands and commit to paying them regardless of what happens, so that Attorney Zappa's concerns aren't our concerns, they're somebody else's concerns that we're paying, right? And include in that the rental of Todd's stage and, and mixing equipment and whatever else is needed. Um, and we're just hiring him, right? Uh, and then we need, I think, the biggest thing is, we need somebody that's committed to scheduling a softball tournament, which ends up being an issue every year. And I can tell you, I cannot be the person doing that, because I don't have any connections in that arena. Um, it's gonna have to be somebody, I don't know if Media Brew even wants to take it on after the last couple of years. It's probably something we need to talk to them about. And then the biggest thing is, parents expect, they expect the township to provide babysitters for their kids. So what are you gonna do to keep those kids entertained? Prior years, it was walk them to the ice rink and said, "Have, have at it." And now there are liability bouncing around on these bouncers. We're not gonna do that again. At least, I don't know that I would want to be your township manager if you're gonna consider doing it again. What can you do instead? That's, that's where the time is gonna have to be spent. Because the, the music arrangements, I, I have no doubt between Great Lakes Radio and Media Brew, they'll, they'll make that happen. They're very good at it. Todd's been doing it for years. He'll make it happen again. Um, I have no doubt that Pete has some ideas for kids that- I have no doubt that Pete has some ideas for kids' activities, but I also think Pete would probably love to see some inflatable devices in it too, so I'm not, I'm not blaming Pete for any of this, just so we're clear. I, I think, just, there's, the kids love them, right? But the kids don't...
You scare them away, though. You scare them away.
Anyway, those are the concerns and things that we should be thinking about.
Okay, Ernie?
I, I have the Township Association meeting tomorrow noon, I'll bring this up tomorrow noon, and forward that things have changed, so they have some idea.
Well, well, Ernie, I just think if we put it on our next agenda, they have at least till the end of February to get a committee together, and they have a whole month of March to plan. And then once, once April first hits, if that's your drop dead date, if you're not going to move forward with it, then we're not doing it, so...
I think, I think Chuck is on that board too, Chuck Williams?
Yes.
He, he will, he will obviously won't be there tomorrow, because he's in Indianapolis, but he did say that they expressed...
They did.
...interest of, of getting more involved in that, and so then you've got a link right there with, with Chuck, also with, and the Media Brew, since he runs it too, so, you know, there's another avenue for you. And, you know, if, if nobody wants to work with Todd, I can always, uh...
Send Pete.
Yeah, Pete, Pete and I'll go wrestle Todd down, but Todd did express to me today that he did have two bands already that have played last year that were looking to book it again, because they had a good time out there. So that, that's, that's good news.
Well, and I think too, we're not reinventing the wheel here with this.
No.
So it's, it's not going to be hard, it's just trying to get the full step up and help.
And I do know, I, I, I'm the one that always hooked up Super One with you guys, and, and Super One really does like that one. And, you know, I work very closely with them, so I think we could probably pull Super One our ways too.
Could I suggest something regarding Super One? They've been an amazing partner all these years, longer than I've been around. Maybe we should let them keep their profits. You know, they're doing this all out of the goodness of their heart, why not? I don't think it makes a significant enough difference in the township's budget to not allow them to take that money back to their business. That's my opinion.
Well, that's their way of, you know...
And I know they appreciate doing it, right?
Which activity are you talking about?
Community Day.
Okay.
I don't think they've, and I don't think they file a tax tribunal on us either, so that's probably even more positive.
Okay, are we good? You're good?
We're good.
Any more questions from the audience?
Yeah, I have one.
There's the microphone, Pete.
Yeah, public comments next.
Public comment, Pete.
Sometimes we over, try to overthink these projects. I've been dealing with kids and festivals and that for thirty years, not once have anybody ever heard. That's pretty good. And I, I would like to, be interested in what the insurance company says, what the liability and accounts and how, you know, how are they receiving any accidents on them? I haven't heard of any yet. All right? So I, the bouncy houses is, Community Days is for community. You want to bring your people into the community, show off what you've got, all right? Car show does the same thing, they bring the people in, they go in the mall, and God knows that they, we need the customers in the mall, you know? And so we always brag that we're going to be the people for, the community for everybody. Well, let's not just throw that away, okay? Oh. And, uh, Community Days, I, I wanted to put it together last year, but have, have a table there for an hour and just say, "Meet the board." So if some people want to, you know, the board members to sit down there, and people want to ask a question or something for an hour, I think that'd be very good. John don't like bouncy houses, but, you know, they're really not that dangerous. You know, I, I debate with the insurance companies of where they're getting their facts from. So it's just, what are you going to do for the kids? That's what we have to come up with, you know? Liability is something that you always worry about, you know, if it's on your property, regardless of who got the insurance, you're liable for it anyways. So I just think we have to do something, if you get something like a walkable inflatable without going off the ground, might be all right. Dump tank, did you bring up the dunk tank, John?
You're going to go in it?
Huh? I would never go down because of my weight, you know, I get stuck on top, it's like a cork, you know? But, but what about a dunk tank?
If I can get you to give up on inflatables, I'll donate time to sit in the dunk tank.
Kids don't give up on them. You don't see, you, you seen it, the kids coming off, out, out the end, how happy they were.
Oh, I'm so glad we can agree to disagree.
We don't have a choice, the insurance company said no.
Huh?
It's not debatable.
I know, get a new insurance company.
We did.
Does that include like the, the inflatable house where they got all them balls in there that the kids, oh, they love going in there and jumping around in the balls? Is that something that we cannot do also?
Is it inflatable?
Well, just the, the structure itself that holds it together, I think, is, but nobody's going up on it. They just, it's full of balls.
Okay, so we're getting into hypotheticals now. I think what we need to do is come up with a specific, very specific example, and run it by the insurance company and see if they'll insure it.
How about the inflatable slides?
No.
I would say that's actually worse.
Yeah.
Because now you have kids much further above grade to fall from.
John has heart attacks on that one.
Can you find out about that one?
And dunk tanks.
I can certainly ask them about it, but I can tell you the conversation I heard when we just went through our insurance renewal process, none of them like them.
The problem with the balls are they're full of germs, okay? So people, that's what they got rid of them at the burger shop, whatever, it's all, yeah, they got rid of all the balls, yeah, because they are full of germs. Then they made kids take their shoes and socks off, I mean, it was like, they don't have them.
Well, why don't we just have Community Days for adults only? The hell with the kids.
I just wrote down some ideas, you're going to ask the public. I think you're going to find, if you can get some young people, like we have on the recreation committee, what do the kids like?
Yeah.
They don't like the same things we liked as kids.
Yeah. Well, I just think we should take a look at it, keep the Community Days, expand it into different areas that, to involve the community if they have questions about the township. You have managers, you've got board directors there for an hour, ask the questions, if they, the board agree to do something like that.
Where do we stand on the dunk tank?
Huh?
Close to you.
I got two available to me, I got one myself, and then I also got John Gooding here, I can take his.
Which one is the nicest?
John Gooding's.
If you can get him lined up, I'll, I'll sit in there for a period of time. As long as the water is not ice.
And I'll have the string, I'll tell you, John. No, we have to do something, make the kids, you know, one thing I liked about the dunk, bouncy houses in, over on the ice rink, they're contained, the parents didn't have to run around looking for their kids, they, they're right there, they come out, and they're gone.
You know, I probably sound like the fun squasher, it's my job to protect the township from risk and liability.
Right.
I get you 100%.
I'm thankful you do that, John, I am. I don't have to agree with you, though.
I know.
Okay, all right. I just said, we have Community Days, let's think about the community coming in to show off what we have, help the businesses, that's our way of helping the businesses in the area, you know, because that's how they do it, pay taxes, whatever they get from us, you know, services and stuff like that, but I think bring the community together and do that, so...
Could we set up a pickleball court?
That's, that's, that's on my list.
A nude pickleball court.
A what?
He wants to know if you'll, you'll set up a nude pickleball court.
That's a big thing in Florida now, all the elders are doing...
Okay.
Yes, let's not go there.
Yeah, that's not part of our business.
I wish my sisters were, oh, no.
Okay, want to go through the motions?
Okay, the motion was to approve the agenda as presented, that was approved, and the second motion was to be a sponsor of the car show and the tree lighting for the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars for a one-year commitment, and that was approved six to one.
Any other comments, board?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
It's part.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't dare say no, they're going to put that in a minute.
We're thirty, so Wednesday's our next meeting, gang, at five-thirty.